Town Plan and Zoning Commission, town of Bloomfield, Thursday, November seventeenth. Regular meeting. First item, next item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes of October twenty seventh. A motion for approval.
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any additions, omissions, errors? Anyone?
Just, just want to question, Mr. Chairperson, if I was absent for the meeting, should I vote on the minutes or not?
No, it's always been a question. I, I, I think I've always heard that if, if. I guess if, if the people that were here can vote for him, I guess you, you could, but usually most people would abstain.
I'm gonna, I prefer to abstain.
Okay. Barry, you're muted again.
How's that?
Okay.
I don't know how I did that. All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved for October twenty seventh. The next item on the agenda would be continuation of the public hearing for one ten, one eighty, one sixty-six Highland Park Drive. Have a motion to continue reopen?
No moves.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your votes aye, we're back on the. In the public hearing, Jose, where are we in this?
We have Guy Hesketh is here to present the application.
Okay.
Yep, there he is.
Oh, that's right, we just opened it last time, right? All right, for those of us, for those of you who haven't been to one of our public hearings, we'll have a presentation by the applicant. Notes and comments from the town planner, want to entertain questions from the public. Questions from the commission, comments from the public, comments from the commission. Mr. Hesketh, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Jose, can I share my screen?
Yes, you can. You should be able to. At the bottom, the green arrow that says share screen.
Let me try this and see if it works here. Okay, how's that? Everybody see that?
Very good.
Yep.
All right, great. For the record, my name is Guy Hesketh. I'm a licensed professional engineer with F.A. Hesketh and Associates. Our corporate offices are at three Kramer Brook in East Granby, Connecticut. And I'm here tonight to represent the applicant, which is Rich Rotundo and Somme Investments LLC is the owner. And we're proposing to put an addition on a building that's currently located at one sixty-six Highland Park Drive. And I've got here on sheet LA one, this shows the configuration of the lots. There's actually two lots. The existing building is here, it's a little over thirty thousand square feet. It's at the end of Highland Park Drive. The address is one sixty-six, and there's a property line that runs right along where I've got the hand moving now. The parcel to the south is one ten Highland Park Drive. These lots will be merged and that will extinguish that property line and the new address will be one sixty-six Highland Park. So we've got the existing facility, it's got a thirty thousand square foot warehouse. It's got an access drive that comes off the cul-de-sac, Highland Park Drive. This, just to the north of us is the entrance drive to the Home Depot warehouse, I believe it is. So if you come in at the cul-de-sac and turn right, there's an existing parking field that's located north of the existing building, and then there's some pavement here, a little turnaround area and a truck loading area in the back. What we're proposing is to put a forty, a little bit over forty thousand square foot addition on the south side of this building. Have a new access drive come in from Highland Park Drive on the southern portion of the property. Forty-one, or I'm sorry, forty-two additional parking spaces along the south. An access drive that will come around the building to the east side of the building and then connect to the existing paved area in the back. And we'll convert this into a one-way drive for truck access. So all the trucks will come in from the south, come through here. We're gonna put three new loading docks in that allow the trucks to back up to the new forty thousand square foot addition. And the truck can pull forward and then back into the existing loading docks for the existing facility that are located here. And then upon exiting, the trucks will pull out and turn left and come out the drive like they do now. Then we have, these loading docks are gonna be at forty-eight inch height, four-foot loading dock, so it's a little bit depressed four feet from the building finished floor elevation. Other features will include a retaining wall located along the eastern perimeter, which you can see as the dark line, the thick line located here, which comes basically to the end of the existing loading area, comes along the eastern perimeter and then wraps around the southern portion here. The reason for that is because the property does drop down from the west to the east, and we're gonna fill in a portion of this property here. The tallest part of the retaining wall is seven feet tall or so. The drainage and the grading on the site, the existing facility, the majority of the parking area is drained to an existing storm drain system located. I'll show you here on the grading plan. Located on Highland Park Drive and it flows down through a town storm drain system. And on the southern end of Highland Park, on the west side, there's an existing detention basin. And that receives pretty much street runoff from the entire industrial subdivision that was built several decades ago. So we're gonna propose a new building here and the new parking area, and we're gonna collect and runoff from the roof of the larger building addition and this parking area on the south of the building and also along the area of the new loading area and the eastern perimeter drive. Collect that with a series of catch basins and manholes, and we're gonna propose to let that flow into an underground, a stormwater detention system located under the parking lot here. And then that will discharge along the southeast portion of the project down in this corner. This system is sized to handle the water quality volume. To treat the runoff, we'll have a hydrodynamic separator in the catch basin that collects runoff from the southern parking area and a portion of the drive around the eastern portion of the site and another hydrodynamic separator or runoff from the loading area that'll be conveyed again to the underground system. That'll be equipped with an isolator row for additional treatment. And then it'll have an outlet structure that will throttle the flow and control everything from the two, five, ten, fifteen, I'm sorry, two, five, ten, twenty-five, fifteen, hundred year storm event so that following development, we have no increase in peak rate of runoff from the site. The piping itself, in accordance with your regulations, is designed to handle the twenty-five year storm event. And again, as I mentioned, this system is designed to handle the water quality volume. Now, in addition to this storm drainage treatment system here, a portion of this existing site, including all of the current loading area, discharges directly untreated to an upland area adjacent to a wetland on the eastern portion of the site. Because we are able to now provide circulation for the trucks and we don't need to have trucks come in and do a K-turn, we can take a portion of the paved area that's over in this area here where you see these graded contours. We're gonna convert this into a water quality basin, which will treat overland runoff that comes from the loading area and treat it into a stormwater management system before it overflows into the wooded area adjacent to the wetlands. This is one of the mitigation measures that we, we've proposed as part of the wetlands impacts that we had and a suggestion by staff to come up with some treatment for existing untreated runoff in this area here. So that's incorporated into this, this project itself. Landscaping, we are proposing to mimic a couple of landscape mounds that are currently located in front of the existing facility at one sixty-six. We'll mimic that in front of the new building here. We have a bunch of perimeter foundation plantings that are proposed. And then in the parking areas here, you can see some deciduous trees that'll be located peppered throughout the parking areas. And then along the retaining wall, we have some wetland transition type plantings that are, that are proposed to provide for a transition between our impact areas and the adjacent wetlands that are located here. Sedimentation and erosion control, they'd meet your requirements. We have a construction exit located in the entrance drive. We are proposing inlet protection on all of the stormwater catch basins that we have located here. A temporary soil stockpile area. And we are proposing riprap erosion protection at the downfall for the water quality basin here and then the outlet for underground system located here. Again, these systems are designed in accordance with the Connecticut DEEP guidelines. Utility wise, this is a wetlands impact plan. We did get approval from your wetlands commission on Monday night, and this plan here is included in the set. I won't get into that in detail, but it does show mitigation areas that are proposed for wetlands impacts. The utility. Utility, we do have proposed for a new fire service coming in off of Highland Park Drive in this location here and likely a new sanitary sewer system proposed at this location you see here. The other utilities, gas, electric, communications will come from existing services on Highland Park. And the other, only other utility item that we have are site lighting. On this plan here, I show designation of fixtures A and B, which will provide lighting for the entire portion of the new development, and those are consisting of wall packs. We don't have any freestanding lighting on the site. These are downlighting fixtures that will be wall packs. And the details of those are shown in the detail sheets here. You can see their LED fixtures that they're directional and they shine a light almost directly down. That's what we're proposing for that. Architecturally, here's a schematic of the floor plan that we have, the existing warehouse. Existing building consists of offices in the front portion on two levels and then a single level warehouse. The new warehouse would be located again, expanded warehouse would be located here in the south, the loading docks that you see in this direction here. Architecturally, on the left is the existing building facade. It's a combination of brick and a metal seam that will be memory from the facade of the new building. And then the warehouse portion will be a little bit higher. It's up to forty foot total, and that's a metal seam type of product. Here's some views looking at it from the existing building, if you look at the side, but the existing building here, and then you'd see face from the north facing south, you would see the the protrusion of the newer portion of the warehouse on the, on the upper level, the higher level. And then from the rear, this is what you'd end up seeing. I'm looking at it from back. The existing building would be represented here. And these are the three loading docks on the angle. So if you're standing on the eastern portion of the building looking west, that's the view that you would see. We have listed on our sheet LA dash one, a number of special permits that would be required for this. The proposed use is a warehouse that's permitted, I guess by special permit under section four point four point C point four point Z. And accessory use, we are asking for in these areas here where the loading docks are, which would be the new loading docks and the existing loading docks. We've got areas designated for outside storage of trucks and trailers. Currently, there's a couple of trailers stored out here. That's really all we're looking for, is the ability to park trailers for storage as needed. And the tractors that are associated with those. There's existing dumpsters that are located here. Those would be maintained. So again, a special permit would be required for the accessory use of outside storage. Also, the retaining wall that we have proposed here along the eastern portion of the, the development. Your regulations under sections six point seven point B, point four, require a special permit for retaining walls over, I think it's four feet in height. So again, the tallest portion of the retaining wall is about seven feet. And we'd be looking for a special permit for that. Your regulations also require a special permit for site lighting if the site lighting is more than fourteen feet above the ground, and that's under section six nine C eight B. As I mentioned, the lights that we are proposing are the wall pack units that would be located on the outside elevation of the building, and I believe that mounting height is on the order of, I think it's like twenty, twenty-four feet or so, twenty-five feet. And then the last thing, under your regulations in the I two zone, the maximum coverage is at fifty percent. But the commission can permit impervious coverage or lot coverage up to sixty percent. And we're, our calculations indicate that we have a total of fifty-one percent. So we're asking for an additional one percent over the fifty percent, which is still nine percentage points under the maximum of sixty that, that's that this commission has authority to grant that coverage requirement. But other than that, I just want to be brief and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hesketh. Mr. Guy, any comments?
Yes, you have my memo that I sent out with the packets. Since that memo went out, we did receive revised plans and I received an email today from Jonathan T.C. Arton, a junior saying that they have satisfied all his concerns and we could eliminate the proposed conditions one, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten, and still keep two, three, and nine. And so the only, I would suggest that, that if you do make a motion to approve in accordance with that, that we just delete those sections and renumber accordingly. Also, Guy, the, the, the wall packs are on, on the wall, obviously. So there's no poles. So I was mistaken in that. I, I thought for some reason they were, you're asking for pole height.
No, no, they're, they're, they would be on the, the walls themselves, so.
I'm not sure if you need one, but.
I couldn't, your regulations indicated something about site lighting above fourteen feet, so I, I just to be safe, you know, if it's necessary.
That was meant mostly for poles, but anyway, we'll, we'll be on the safe side. We'll, we'll grant you that. I, I will put, keep that in there, but.
Right, thank you.
On there. Other than that, I, you know, the memo self-explanatory, if you have any questions, if you have any answer. While I have the floor, I neglected, there's a strange face on the screen. Dennis Kader. Y'all probably wondering why, why is he hanging around? Is he a new member? What? Dennis is gonna be taking over as a director as of Monday. So he's joining us to get a taste for what's going on. So meet Dennis and I'm sure later on, perhaps under other business, he can introduce himself and and do so and then, and get to know you better.
Very good.
Go ahead. Sorry for that interruption.
Entertain questions from the audience? I see, I see we have quite a few attendees. Anyone who has a question at this point?
I don't see any hands up.
All right, coming back to the commission. Let's start there. Mr. Mara, any questions?
The only question I had is about the parking of trailers and truck bodies. How many do you expect to be able to park? I'm looking at your schematic and I'm trying to make it out here.
Yeah, there, there are currently six loading positions on the existing building, two of which are used now for temporary trailer storage. And the three new ones that we would have there, so we would be looking at probably a total of six spaces for the outside storage. And, and most times that wouldn't even be the case, probably two to three, but we'd like the opportunity to have six trailers here. You know, again, being something overnight or in some cases it might be, a couple trailers may be there for storing parts and things like that, but they would be, you know, regular tractor trailer enclosed type of trailers.
So you're not looking for outside storage on shelves or racks or anything outside? It could all be in trailers.
Yeah, and the, the owner just emailed me and told me that there would be no more than two maximum at any given time that are out there, but the idea would be is that we'd have the flexibility to have them in any one of those six positions.
Okay, so you're not looking to house truck bodies?
Oh, no, 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 no. This is purely inventory type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blint, any questions?
A couple. At the wetlands meeting the other night, I think one of our commissioners asked that as much impervious, this paver material be used as possible. And I think your fifty-one percent seems a little slim potentially.
Excuse me, Ms. Blint, I think you mean pervious pavement.
Yeah.
They wanted them to use paving blocks, Guy.
Yeah, we, I do have something here. Let me show you that really quick, and I think this might answer your question, Katie. I'm gonna zoom in on this and hopefully I can do this without the screen crashing on me. But subsequent to the wetlands meeting, I think one of the, one of the comments was, could we consider putting some impervious type pavement in? So what I've done over in this location here on the southeast corner of this parking area, I'm proposing grass pavers here. Which, which takes a total of ten parking spaces and provides it, and you know, something that will infiltrate water. We don't really want to do it with the drive area because of the, the heavier loads of truck traffic that would be required. I think this seemed like a really logical place to propose something like that down here.
And the maximum amount at the same time.
Well, your regulations require that you really can't count these as as a pervious area for green space analysis, for coverage calculations. So if you were to include this, we would probably drop below the fifty percent level.
Okay.
But, but fifty-one is, assuming that's paved, which is, which we're proposing, proposing that it not be paved. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. And then another question about the roof on the new building. I'm not sure if anyone has considered reflective paint or something that's environmentally friendly to prevent more heat pollution from industrial buildings.
And I, I wouldn't really know the answer to that, but I can certainly bring it up with the owner, and I'm not sure what type of roof that they're proposing to use for that. If it is like a metal seam or something of that nature, I can request that they use some type of less reflective materials or more reflective materials.
More reflective.
Yeah, and I think typically that's sort of the trend in the industry now, but again, I don't want to speak for the owner, but I'll certainly bring that up. Make, make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver, glad to have you back. Any questions?
Thanks, I appreciate. No, I have no questions at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Mr. Lester.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Hesketh, could you un? Get us a clear screen. Unjoin us, please.
Barry, I think you have to ask Michelle.
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, just running down, yes.
Miss the chair, no question.
Where'd we leave off here? Let me back up on my list. Go the other way. Okay, Mr. Lester, any questions?
No, no questions, Mr. Chair.
And who did I leave out?
Ms. Adams.
Yeah, well, there you are. Okay, you just popped up. That hat threw me off. I thought we had a cab driver in.
I live in New York long enough.
Right.
No questions, sir.
Okay. Moving on, comments from the audience? I don't anticipate any.
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, let's run down. Any comments from the commission? We'll start at the other end this time. Let me get back out here. Ms. Adams, got you at the other end. Any comment?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lester, comments?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver, any comments?
Comments, thank you.
Mr. Mara.
No, no comments, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Blint, any comment?
No, sir.
I'm gonna have to break one of my own rules and back up and ask a question of Mr. Hesketh. Very early in my career, I designed a loading dock that had a four-foot drop off the back of the building and I wound up in a swamp at the bottom. The water in that loading area, does it come out under normal flow or is there some structure in there to collect it?
Oh, because of the, the, the land itself drops down from the west towards the east, we're able to design the driveway so it's four foot below the finished floor elevation of the building and then actually pitch the water away from the dock, so.
Pitch is away, okay.
It pitches away and then it's picked up in a catch basin that's just located outside of the perimeter of the, of the drive itself that circumvents the dock area. Yep.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And you have one last turn it back. If you have anything further that you may have omitted or anything you just come up to.
No, I, I think I've captured it all and, you know, I appreciate staff's willingness to take a look at those plans I sent over today around noon. I was scrambling to get them done since Monday to try to address many of the items that I could. And yeah, I don't, I think we're okay with the, the recommended conditions of approval. I just wanted to reiterate that the fifty-one percent, there was some confusion with the flood base flood elevation versus what the FEMA limits on the map, where we straightened that out and that number was used for our new calculation. We ended up at the fifty-one percent, so I just want to make sure that the approval motion includes that, you know, fifty, from fifty to fifty-one percent impervious area. But other than that, yeah, everything's fine.
Hey, thank you very much. Again, if you could please disconnect yourself, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, I think I am, aren't I?
Yep.
I've got you filling my screen.
Oh, you gotta choose a gallery view.
Yeah, nothing happens when I hear it. Okay, yeah, it just came up. It didn't come up this time. Yes, I have it now. Thank you, Jose.
The problem, yeah, that happens every once to me. I say, why, why, why I'm only seeing one person up there?
Gotta get the Brady Bunch screen back on.
Yeah.
Yes.
The gallery view. But any case, just, just so to reiterate, reiterate, that was easy. On, on, on my memo, the proposed motion should eliminate conditions one, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten, and renumber the other ones you know, accordingly. Let's see, the, the other thing that I would add then according to, that we need to say under conditions to be met prior to, well, no. Under general conditions, probably add one that says the special permit approval includes a, a impervious allowance of fifty-one percent.
Thank you.
Just so it's clear on the record that, that we've allowed up to fifty-one percent impervious.
Right. Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, we're back on the agenda, and we have before us the application of Richie Rotundo for warehouse addition at, well, now it's one sixty-six Highland Park Drive. Want to entertain a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, if I may just ask a question?
Certainly.
About my status. Had somebody been appointed to vote on this before I, I joined you a little late?
No, nobody's been appointed to replace you.
I think all seven, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six. I think everyone that's here is, is voting.
Oh, okay, that makes it easy.
Because we have, we have seven members and.
Yeah, except that a couple of them are.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Didn't you say that you don't take the office until January?
No, this is just because I got here late tonight. Yeah, I don't.
Oh, 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 oh.
Katie and Michael are both sitting, are, are in.
Yes, right. They're both voting, sitting.
They're all voting members tonight. Stephen, I had mentioned Stephen had called in and said he wasn't gonna make it tonight, so.
Right. Okay, you have a motion before us for approval. Any discussion, comment?
We, we have not made a motion yet.
I thought somebody did and we seconded, I heard a second. All right, you have a motion to, for approval. We'll go through it again.
We'll move.
Thank you, a second.
In accordance with my memo and the conditions and.
Yeah, I think we have to cite the.
I think, yeah, I think you have to cite what you're approving. So I would make the motion in accordance with, with the suggested motion contained in my memo and with the changes outlined in the record.
Is that all right?
I'll make a motion if appropriate.
So I rescind my motion.
Okay.
We're behaving like a bunch of rookies here. Let's get the, we'll have a sec. We're behaving like a bunch of rookies here. Let's get the, we'll have a second.
Thanksgiving coming up, nicely.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit of Richard Rotundo to construct a warehouse of square footage of forty thousand four hundred and forty-three feet addition with a retaining wall over four feet in height and outside storage of trucks and trailers for property located at one-ten and one-sixty-six Highland Park Drive in an I-two zone owned by Soma Investments LLC. Approval is conditioned on compliance with the reference, the plans referenced tonight. Representations made on the record. Uh, and the comments of Mr. Geiner in his memo dated November sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, and the conditions on there, except for conditions one, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten. Uh, and adding a condition that a special permit, there is special allowance under our authority to grant a special permit for use of pervious materials up to fifty-one percent on the site has also been included in this approval.
We'll have a second for that.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any commentary?
Jose, did I get all the right numbers on the?
Add it, perfect. You nailed it.
Nicely done.
Glad I voted for you.
Me too.
We're gonna miss him.
Okay. Hearing now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mr. Hesketh.
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
You too.
Next item on the agenda is a new public hearing uh, for one Tungus Avenue. Pedestrian bridge of property located at one Tungus Avenue. I'd ask our secretary to read the public notice of the hearing. Legal notice, I should say.
A legal notice published in the Hartford Current on November third and November tenth. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct public hearings at a meeting on November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, commencing at seven PM to consider the following. Special permit application of Rizard CPAC to construct a new library with parking lot and pedestrian bridge at property located at one Tungus Ave in a BCD zone. Owners to Town of Bloomfield.
Thank you.
And I think I promoted everyone that's supposed to be promoted. If I haven't, let me know.
Okay, the, the procedures that are outlined in the first public hearing will be maintained for this hearing. So we'll now have a presentation by the applicant. Who is here for that?
I am here. Good evening. My name is Richard Cepic. I'm an architect with TSKP Studio here in Hartford. Uh, and I'm accompanied this evening with several consultants. One of whom is Mike Seagan. He's a landscape architect with Richter and Seagan. He'll introduce himself momentarily. I believe we also have here, if, I'm not sure if he's been promoted yet, uh, but we have representatives from SLR Engineering as well.
Okay, let me, is that Jeffrey Paratio?
Paratio is with Richter and Seagan, so he could be promoted. Tom Daley or Rock Emond and Dave Sullivan.
Tom Daley.
Yes.
Daley.
Okay, thought I had, but, okay, and, and who else?
Tom Daley and Dave Sullivan.
Okay.
Before we continue, will the recording secretary please note that Mr. Hussein has joined the meeting? So.
I have him. I have him.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
And anyone else that, that I need to promote? Do I need to promote Bob Berman, Mark Weissman, or Donna Larson? Will they be speaking? And they can always speak by raising their hands, but.
Yeah.
Pardon?
They are members of the building committee.
Should I promote them or just let them raise their hands if they want to speak?
I think, uh, just let them raise their hands if they want to speak.
Okay, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, and thank you, Mr. Geiner. So before you this evening is the application for the new building that is proposed for Prosser Library. It's located on Tungus Avenue to replace the existing building that's on Prosser Avenue. I'm sorry, Tungus Avenue. Right now, we are in what we call design development stage. We have enough details worked out for all of the site plan considerations, and we have schematics, uh, high-level schematics, as well as a three-dimensional model that I can show you pictures of uh, during the course of the presentation. Uh, for the benefit of members of the public, we do have colored versions of the plans, and we have uh, actually photographed some of the model that we're proposing for the building that we will present to you today. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mike Seagan from Richter and Seagan to present to you the overall site, and then we'll move on to SLR, and then in the end, I will show you illustrations of the proposed building. So Mike, if you could continue the presentation?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Hello to Dennis. Uh, for everyone's orientation, uh, the project is located in Bloomfield Center District Zone in a prominent location at the intersection of Mountain and Tungus Avenue. The project includes two sites, as Richard mentioned. The existing Prosser Library Site at one Tungus Avenue and the former Riley Lumber Parcel at six Mountain Avenue. The two parcels together total three point eight acres. And while we will be referencing the library parcel and the Riley Lumber Parcel tonight for orientation purposes, the property lines between the parcels will be eliminated, creating one overall parcel. I, I think the aerial nicely illustrates the library's prominent location uh, in the town center as well as the surrounding neighborhood context, which largely consists of commercial development and apartment complex to the south, open space in the town, in town facilities. Washbrook, uh, is centered on the property line running north and south be, between the two parcels. Philly Park is just to the north of the site. The Town Green is directly east across Tungus Avenue, and Town Hall is located to the southeast diagonally across the intersection. Next, please. This rendering of the survey illustrates the existing conditions for both parcels. The one point two acre library site is extensively developed with the existing library building, exterior walks, pavement, parking areas, lawn and landscaping. An MDC sewer easement is just east of Washbrook and runs parallel to both the brook uh, in the existing parking lot, library's parking lot. Just west of the, of Washbrook is the two point five acre former Riley Lumber Company site, which includes currently a vacant building which is surrounded by deteriorating impervious and gravel pavement. The northern part, portion of the parcel is wooded and contains a small forested wetland. Washbrook and its riparian corridor runs between the two parcels. Washbrook has a regulatory floodway and a hundred-year floodplain with a flood elevation of one fifteen point two. Limits of the hundred-year flood hazard area are shown in red. If you look at the, uh, the limit to the west, uh, it runs pretty much, uh, along the property, the western property line. So it encompasses almost all of the Riley, of lumber site. Uh, and to the east, uh, it runs about halfway up the library site running into the library building at the north and south portions. The Washbrook Corridor floodway is shown in purple, paralleling the brook on both sides. The proposed plan, as you will see, locates the proposed building and new pavement within the previously developed portions of both sites. There are no direct impacts to the wetlands. There are no obstructions proposed in the floodway, and in, in the interior floors of the new building are elevated above the flood hazard. Next, please. Here is the proposed site plan. The existing library building will be demolished and replaced with a new larger building with a strong orientation to the town center. Uh, an intersection there. The main floor of the library, uh, and its main entrance will be oriented towards the higher elevations of Tungus Avenue in the intersection with Mountain and Tungus. There will be a plaza and steps at the building main entrance. The proposed library footprint is about two times the size of the existing library building. A portion of the lower floor, uh, to the west side of the building will have parking under the building, and that's where we're locating, uh, most, if not all, the accessible parking spaces. Access to this lower parking area and lower entrance to the building will be from driveways both off of Tungus and Mountain Avenues. Uh, Dave Sullivan will probably talk a little bit about, uh, both, both Tungus and Mountain Avenues are state highways and how we're gonna address, uh, coming in and exiting the site from those points. A proposed service drive runs along the west side of the building over the existing MDC sewer line easement. A main parking lot for the library is located on the former Riley Lumber Site. The existing vacant building will be demolished, and a new seventy-seven space parking lot will be graded and constructed in its place. The total parking proposed for the new library totals ninety-three spaces. It, this includes sixteen spaces that are under that lower section, uh, of the library, on the library side. The, this meets the requirements, or total number spaces of ninety-three meets the requirements proposed, uh, recommended in the traffic report. A pedestrian bridge will provide an accessible walk connecting uh, from the parking lot to the library spanning the brook and the floodway. The bridge and south port, porch of the library are significant features of the site plan and the architecture, and the architect will discuss both the architecture and bridge in more detail following. There are a number of large mature trees on the site. We're working with a consulting arborist and have prepared a tree protection and preservation plan for the trees that we are saving. Unfortunately, one of the large mature oaks in front of the library on Tungus Avenue has a vascular disease, is in declining condition, and will need to be removed before construction starts. The proposed landscaping and plantings for the new library consist of numerous tree shrub, frineals, and ground cover, and some mix of both native and adaptive plant species. Native wetland plantings are proposed for the water quality basins, as well as upland tree plantings around the parking lot, building perimeter, and within the streetscape. Next, please. This grading plan shows the regrading required on a good portion of both parcels. The grading for the library parcel is to accommodate a, the new larger building and raising the building elevations, uh, due to the flood hazard. The Riley parking lot grading maintains an accessible connection for the bridge and includes proposed water quality basins and compensation for work in the hundred-year floodplain. We are currently working with the design team and town staff, both Jonathan and Peter, to reduce the extent of fill grading and activities in the hundred-year flood hazard area on both the Riley, uh, parking lot site, as well as the new library site east of the brook. Next, please. That concludes, uh, my overview of the site design and the proposed site improvements. As I mentioned, most of the proposed development is in areas of previously developed on both parcels, and there are no direct wetland impacts proposed, including anything within the Washbrook Riparian Corridor. There are no proposed structures or obstructions in the Washbrook floodway, and the new library building will be elevated above, above the flood hazard. And as I mentioned, we are currently working, actually have a meeting set with Jonathan tomorrow morning uh, to, to, uh, work together and reduce the extent of fill grading activities in the hundred-year, uh, flood hazard area. With that, I will turn it over to, uh, Tom Daley, who will provide a brief overview of the civil engineering components of the project.
Uh, thank you, Mike. And for the record, Tom Daley with, uh, SLR Consulting. Uh, we're serving as the civil engineer on the project. And, uh, as Mike indicated, uh, we, you know, we started out with looking at what we have under existing conditions. Um, the existing library is served by, uh, by MDC Water and Sewer, uh, and that will continue to be that case. Uh, one note to you is, uh, this commission's probably aware, there's a large sanitary sewer trunk main that runs between, uh, basically runs down adjacent to Washbrook. Uh, because of that, we actually engaged a conversation with the MDC very early on, and they have plans in front of them, and we've had coordination meetings, so we're coordinating with them ver, very early in the process as opposed to later on. So we, uh, we do have these plans in front of the MDC, uh, because we're in proximity to their trunk line, and they're currently reviewing that, and we actually had a, a follow-up call with them just recently, so, uh, we can report that we're on top of that. In terms of stormwater management, uh, really, we have two things going on. One, the floodplain, and then two, uh, just stormwater management. And, uh, currently today, there is no stormwater management on either the Riley or the Prosser Library site, so anytime we redevelop a site, we see this as an opportunity to improve things and bring things up to basically two thousand twenty-two, uh, water quality standards. The Washbrook is a very important resource to, um, the Town of Bloomfield. So we were definitely focused on water quality as much as, uh, in, um, uh, quantity mitigation, and that really went part and parcel also with the floodplain. Uh, from a stormwater perspective, we really looked at the two, because we have Washbrook in between. We really looked at these two projects independently, and they stand on their own, but at the same point, we also did look at them, uh, together. Um, on the Prosser side, while the building is getting bigger, um, much of the pavement, uh, as you know, in the back of the existing Prosser Library, there's a lot of pavement. So on that side of the library, we're focused more on water quality, and, uh, we will be putting a drainage system around the building, and then also routing that through a hydrodynamic separator to provide water quality. On the Riley Lumber side, which there is some pavement out there, but this is resulting in an increase in impervious. So we are providing, uh, two stormwater basins. Uh, Mike, we, essentially, the entire parking lot sheet flows to the north. Uh, at that point, we have a, basically a, a gravel strip or a level spreader, and that goes into a, uh, a large stormwater basin in the back. And that basin is designed for really twofold. One, it would be providing compensation for any additional fill that we're putting in the one hundred-year floodplain, so every cubic yard of fill we put in the floodplain, we have to compensate so we're, it's a net zero. And that basin provides both water quality and, um, floodplain compensation. And then just to the south of the existing pedestrian bridge, we also have a smaller basin. Uh, there's a series of catch basins right near the driveway, and we route those, um, to that basin, so that basin is providing, um, stormwater detention and water quality. We did do a detailed hydraulic analysis, and we, um, based upon these water quality feature, quantity features, stormwater management features, uh, we're showing a slight decrease, uh, in runoff from the proposed project. Um, but as Mike indicated, uh, we are working, uh, very closely with your town engineer. Um, he also serves as the town's floodplain manager. So, uh, he is taking a very close look, and, and thank, thanks to Jonathan, he's offered some really good sug, suggestions to us on how to, um, minimize that, and I, it may have multiple, uh, benefits in terms of reducing some fill and reducing the size of stormwater. But, um, we really appreciate his collaborative approach, but we think we have a, um, approach to solve his issue, and I think Mike indicated, we're actually meeting with him, um, early, um, I think early next week. The wetlands meeting, uh, while they did approve the wetland boundary amendment, they, they had, they extended the, the hearing for the, the wetlands permit. So I think by Jose's, uh, letter, we have time to work with the town engineer, and it's our full expectation that when we come back to see you in December, that we'll have all those engineering comments, uh, resolved. Uh, with that, I'm gonna ask Dave Sullivan, who is our traffic engineer, to provide some brief comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, for the record, again, David Sullivan. I manage the Traffic and Transportation Planning Group for SLR. Um, I'll give you a brief overview. I'll give you a brief overview. We conducted a traffic study and a parking study for the library. I'll start with the traffic study. We collected existing conditions data at the driveways. Primarily, that was to give us traffic volumes on the state highways. Although we did count the traffic in and out of the library, I will say that we didn't use that data for much. We relied on industry data for libraries because many of the programs and things of that nature are virtual or were virtual at the time we did the study because COVID. So we wanted to be more realistic to evaluate non-COVID conditions. We also understand there's a busy traffic light right between the two driveways at the intersection. And we were cognizant of that and made observations of how the vehicle queues may or may not impact operations, particularly on Mountain Avenue. With those two things in mind, the traffic volumes and the queue data, we made some recommendations for access. So the Tuxus Avenue access, we suggest that be maintained as a right turn in and right turn out only. The primary reason there is we think any left turns at that intersection will have a negative effect on the traffic signal operation. And we wanted to make sure anything we do in the future there is not reliant on the traffic light. Along Mountain Avenue, our recommendation is for no left turns out of the easterly most driveway or the driveway closest to the traffic light. It'll have lesser traffic because there's less parking, but also our observations indicate that during the peak hours, there is some blockage of that from vehicles queuing up from the traffic light. No restrictions on the new parking lot where most of the traffic is coming and going from. And at that driveway, we observed little to no blockage from the queue observations we made during the peak hours. So with that being said, we estimated what the traffic to the new expanded library would be based on the library data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We think the data is a little bit conservatively high, but nonetheless, we put that traffic onto the driveways. We did our analysis and with the turn restrictions in place, we find that the operations will be level of service C or better at all of the three driveways. Helped, of course, by the turn restrictions where traffic is heaviest. So that being said, I'll move quickly over to the parking study. So what we wanted to do, and again, we had a situation where we did make parking observations, but of course, they weren't indicative of what pre-COVID or post-COVID for the existing operation would be. So we created our own model, which modeled three components of parking. The parking associated with employees, parking associated with what we call visitors, which are people that drop in to pick up or drop off a book or do some other activity at the library. And the third component, which was programs that take place at the library. So we made an estimate based on existing demographics. And then we discussed what we thought the parking situation was there today with library staff and felt that our estimates were realistic, realistic in terms of what they've observed in the past at the library. So we essentially calibrated a model that we felt comfortable with. So we took those calibrated characteristics, applied them to future demographics, new employee levels, increased visitation, more programs, larger programs, and we looked at what we thought the library would need for parking under day-to-day activities under a, which includes normal programming and day-to-day activities with future peak programming, and also looked at what would happen with the larger conference space or the community space that's being posed. What we found was that the amount of parking being provided will accommodate nicely the day-to-day activities. When there are peaking of the programs some days, then they'll have to do a little bit of parking management, which would include things like, things that they do today, like parking employees off-site. And then for the much larger community space events, more parking management would be required. For example, if it was a full-capacity event where a hundred or a hundred and twenty seats were being filled, they would have to make arrangements to not allow visitors that night and park employees off-site, things of that nature. So the parking management opportunities or requirements would go up depending on the the level of activities. But for day-to-day activities, we think the parking lot is appropriately sized at ninety-three spaces. So that's a summary of the parking and the traffic. And I guess I will turn it back to Richard or to Mike.
Yes, thank you, Dave, very much. This is Richard Sipak again. Let's stay on this slide just for a second. I'm going to show you some pictures of what this building looks like, how it's going to work. But this slide is a good slide to start with. The main, and this is a three-story building. You just heard the explanation of the lowest level with the parking. But the main level is one floor up above, and the plaza is the location where the main entrance is located, right there where that cursor is showing you. Access to that main entrance could be from the lower level. If you were to park at the lower level, then you would take either the stairs or an elevator that would bring you directly up into the library. Or if you park on the former Riley Lumber site, you would take the pedestrian bridge and which would take you directly up to a porch and then right into the main entrance at the front of the building next to the plaza, right there. So that's how the building is oriented on the site and its entrances. Next slide, if you will. So this is the lowest level. It's an enlargement of the parking area, and you can see that there's an entrance to where the stair is located. And adjacent to the stair is an elevator. There is a secondary entrance directly off of Mountain Avenue on the south side that also leads to this vestibule. So if you were a pedestrian walking on the sidewalk, coming up from the Riley Lumber parcel, you could enter directly into there and that could take you directly up into the library. Next. This is the main floor. There are different parts of functions here on the main floor. On the south side, again, is the porch. And if you were to come into the main library at the main entrance, you would enter into that very large space, that purple-colored space. We'll show you a picture of that in a minute. Or if you were going to come for an after-hours event, which is the community room, that yellow area, you could come in directly off doors, directly into the room or into a vestibule. And in that area, you would also have bathrooms that would be available for meetings. The light pink area is the children's area, right there. It has windows on the western side. The green area is the teen area. And then let's go back to the main space, the purple space. There's a grand stair that leads directly up to the second or the top floor, which is the third floor. Next slide, please. So the main space where you come in into the library, the circulation desk is on the right, but I wanted to show you this picture because there's a large open window or two-story window. Directly out that window, you would see across the street, you'd see the town green, and that's an important element in the design of this building. Next. Or if you were to go into the community center, you'd come into a space such as this, which could accommodate over a hundred people. There would be a view to the left, which is the western elevation of the building. This is also one of the functions or one of the criteria for creating the exterior elevations. Next. The children's area has a very interesting space that has earth tones and natural tones such as the green carpet and also the blue ceiling with some acoustic clouds in it. And this also faces west. You can see the windows beyond. Next. The top floor has circulation material, books, has a comfortable seating area, has meeting rooms. And in the orange area is staff, staff offices and work areas. And also on this level is a mechanical space, which is exposed to the outdoors right there. There is no mechanical equipment on the roof. This is contained and enclosed, or it's completely screened. There's no mechanical equipment on the site and no visible mechanical equipment from the outdoors. Next. You know, we submitted in our package some plans as well as elevations. And I always find elevations, especially black and white elevations, very difficult to understand, although I'm sure the commission has looked at many, many elevations in their review of plans. But this is, I think, for the benefit of the public. And for those of you who just can't understand what we're doing, looking at the elevations, I think it's important to show you these photographs of the models that we made. The plaza, as you can see, is in the foreground, and then the main entrance is in the corner of the building. The east elevation, where the large windows are, has in front of it a grass, grassy area, and that is a nod to the town green, which is across the street. Next slide, please. This is the view of the eastern elevation. You can see the porch on the left side that leads to the bridge. Next. This is the north elevation. This is where the parking garage has access from the driveway that comes down from Tuxus Avenue and then brings you around to the entrance into the lower level. Next. We did study alternatives based upon the request of the building committee. We're not sure what the lowest band of the building is. It's a traditional approach to doing architecture. You create a top band of windows. You create a middle band where the major spaces are with windows, and then the lower band, as you can see, which is where the parking area is, could be done in brick, could be done in stone, or it could be done in concrete. Depending on the pricing, any of those scenarios are possible. Next. And this is the west elevation, and this is how the bridge is connected to the building. Next. That method of combining red brick, which is what we're proposing for the library, and white trim such as this colonnade at the center church in Hartford is very traditional approach. Layered elements and very simple composition. Next. This is the final slide, and it's just a reminder of what the main facade will look like as you approach the building. So that concludes our presentation of the project. We'd love to hear your questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Jose?
Hang on. Just bring up my, you do have my memo. As mentioned, the project is subject to the Wetlands Water Course Review, so they've tabled it, so Mike. And again, you also have town engineers' comments. We're extensive. I know they're meeting tomorrow, so you know, my recommendation is because of the extent of the issues raised by engineering and the fact that the Wetlands Agency has continued the hearing, that this be continued also to the December meeting of the town planning and zoning commission. The one item that's still outstanding and and I think needs to be taken care of is I think we need to have a floodplain application. Our regulations require that. That we have a separate application for floodplain, which I don't think we've received yet, so. And again,
Can we remove that elevation from the screen, please?
Yes, stop sharing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah. And again, also the design review board, I think, reviewed it a couple of times. One very preliminarily a few months ago. And then again, last, on the third of this month, I believe, was the last time, and there's still some, some concerns on the part of the members about the design, and I don't know if there was any any changes addressed, but I, the design review board meets again on the first. If there's any additional comments, it'll come out of that beginning.
Jose, is there anyone indicating that they would like to speak? At this point, we would have comments, questions from the public, and even though we're going to carry it forward, if they're here tonight just for this, I'd like to offer them the opportunity to ask questions at this point. Is there anyone in the audience who has some questions?
I don't see any hands up.
All right, then. I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing into December meeting.
Did you want to, Mr. Chairman, I suggest that if the commission has any questions for the
You're right, that they could ask.
Give them a chance to address them before the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Lester, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Adams, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Who we got next here? Mr. Mara?
There's a lot to chew on. I think I'll save my questions for next time.
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, so I was confused. There wasn't a confirmation of the exterior envelope of the building as of yet?
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. The exterior envelope is primarily brick on all sides. The only possible variation is at the lowest level, which is the garage level on the western side as well as on the northern side. We have been discussing with the building committee the possibility of brick, again, to match the rest of the exterior or the possibility of stone, stone veneer, or the possibility of concrete. Each of them has different prices. Each of them would be fine architecturally to complement the building. But no final determination has been made by the building committee. I think they would like to see some bidding prices before the final determination is made.
Okay, would that be poured-in-place concrete or is that like precast concrete?
It probably would be stucco on concrete or stucco on concrete basery, one or the other, but it would have a concrete look. The other element on the exterior are white components of the porch and the colonnade. The colonnade would be aluminum, painted aluminum. On the eastern elevation where you saw that white screen that's really sun control, and that is also aluminum, painted aluminum.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flint, any questions?
Not at this time, sir.
Mr. Hussein, any questions?
I have a couple. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
All right, let's start from the top down. I guess the mechanical room, it shows an open roof there. Is that what you were showing there on the plans? So on the third floor, the doors will open out to that room. That's an outdoor, I guess, roof, but it's not covered. Is that what you showed on the plans, Richard?
The, that mechanical space is located at the third floor level. Above the third floor is another roof, but that mechanical space actually is, you can go out from the third floor directly out onto that mechanical space. That mechanical space would contain chillers for condensing units. So we don't have any mechanical equipment on the actual top, top of the third floor, above the third floor. And we don't have any mechanical equipment on the ground either around the building. It's concealed on two sides by the building itself, the third floor spaces, and on two sides by a wall with open grills for air circulation.
So, so you can open the doors and go into that space, and then you're also, you're outdoor to the open elements, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. So it's a convenient location, not only to screen the equipment, but to maintain the equipment.
But in terms of the insulation around that area for that third floor, having been exposed and not covered, would that area of the room or that third of the building in the would that area of the room or that third of the building in the third floor be colder than the surrounding areas? Because I just find it hard to just have it open to the elements. For example, let's say we have a major snowstorm. It's four inches, you know, four feet of snow. How can it even, I mean, are the doors, probably you're swinging inside or outside? How do you open that door if they need access to something out there?
So the door can be swung either way. We'll, we'll design it so that it could swing in. But, you know, in a heavy snowstorm, I mean, that whole area is going to be waterproof. It's not going to allow leaks into the building. So, and the insulation under that space will be, you know, the kind of insulation we would put on a roof. So it's a very thermally sound separation between indoors and outdoors. And the two walls that separate the third floor spaces from that outdoor space also are exterior insulated walls. So it's, it's a very tight, thermally separated area.
Maybe I need to look at it some more. I just feel like it's, I don't want to say it's wasted space. I just feel like we could do something better with that space instead of just being open and walled up to the roof almost without a roof, you know? So I'll take a look at the plans and I'll present some more comments on that. Speaking of elevation, and you said everything looks better in elevation. I would love to see some elevation with the flood zone, cross-sections from Washbrook, from the west parking lot and how it's going to be flooded in that lower level. Because I think one of the biggest concern I had was that I think that taxpayers are going to see a new building. They're going to see a new library, but then they're going to see the same old flood in. And then they're going to be like, oh, what's going on here? I thought they fixed this. They don't understand we're in a FEMA flood zone. And I don't think they'll understand that the entire parking up to the elevator is going to be flooded in a major, major storm, in a high-frequency storm. So I think I'd want to see some elevation shots right at the bridge, mid-side, midway through the building and then towards upstream some more.
When you say elevation, you mean engineering elevation?
Cross-section, sorry.
Okay.
And probably would be nice to show a cross-section with what, with the hundred and fifteen point two feet flood zone shown on there too, to see how high that water is and what's going to be covered. I think that's going to give us a good perspective. We'll hope that the intensity is not as bad for the hundred years, but as we know, they've been starting to get more and more. They've increased their intensity. So I'd like to see a cross-section of that. And I, I also like to see the footprint of the bridge pedestals and tiers and abutments, because you have a flooding bridge right now, but I'd like to see some more detail of where that, that abutments are going to be. Is that only going to be a long-span bridge? Is there going to be a two or three-span bridge? You know, it's hard to tell. Do you know if it's a single-span bridge or is it a multi-span bridge?
It's, at the moment, we're showing a single-span bridge, which is placed on the east, on the eastern side, right up against the porch of the building. And it's a constant gentle slope down to the Riley lumber support, which would be at grade. So it's a single span. At the moment, we are considering introducing a support and abutment outside the floodway, but on the Riley lumber parcel, that there's a big difference in structural cost by creating that kind of a support. So we're looking at that as a possibility, but we can certainly furnish more information for your consideration.
Speaking of that area too that's going to be flooded, I know the concrete, kind of like the riverside boathouse, it's mostly concrete. So when that river floods, the concrete is great, but the library has a, I mean, to match the town center, I don't think the concrete is going to work there. So I think you'd have to continue with the brick and/or I think the veneer. So I would, I would, I know the concrete might be the cheaper alternative, especially if we're going to have a lot of intensity flooding. But I would stay away from the concrete. I just don't think it looks pretty well. It doesn't fit the characteristic of the building. And then the other one last thing I want to add is that, and I had mentioned this, I think, one of the other meanings is that I would like to see a connection, if possible, to the plaza where Isaac's Bagel is in. And I think you have an area there where the bridge comes directly into that little bump out, where you have a tree. If we can potentially work with a town engineer and get a curb cut here into that plaza, so someone can then leave there, walk indirectly in to get a, use the restaurants there or grab, you know, use, you know, one of the service stations or whatever, that'd be great. Because it could create the connectivity between the three parcels and increase some of that foot traffic.
You, you mentioned the business. Which business?
Isaac's Bagel, that plaza.
Richard, yeah, he's talking about the connection to the west and we're looking at a pedestrian connection there.
Yeah.
Okay, so Riley's, yes.
Yeah, so that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair, until the next, the next. This is some stuff for consideration until the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, there are members of this commission who are tired of hearing me recount my past history with this commission. But I would comment that December marks my anniversary. I attended my first TPZ meeting in 1969. And one way or another, I've been associated with this commission. And I think in that entire period of time, I've never dragged my personal wants, desires or itches into the conversation, but I do have a problem with this particular layout. Up until about three years ago, it wouldn't have bothered me, but I'm now in that class of people that requires a walker to navigate. I used to say I could get by with a hundred feet without the walker. Now I'm lucky to be able to get ten feet. If I have to park in that area and then walk across a bridge to get to the library, I probably am not going to go to the library. And I'm sure there are other people in that same condition. Was there ever any thought given, as long as you're building a new building, putting the building on the Riley side where there's more room?
About that too, Barry.
Obviously be a short walk. Not to mention it on a December, January, February day with a little bit of ice around, it's, it's a treacherous walk. And is there any thought given to that or any consideration planned? And I don't recall any mention of where your handicap parking will be.
I'll take that last comment first. So we have, we have at the lowest level, immediately under the building, handicap parking spaces.
Okay, they were not called out. It's the only reason I'm asking, obviously. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't specifically call them out, but the plans that we submitted do show them as handicap spaces.
All right, well, that's a little bit of easement.
I, I did mention that, Richard. Probably was not as, as clear about it as I should have been. But we're looking for a, handicap spaces are required for the remote parking lot or the Riley parking lot. We're going to ask the state for an exception to put all the handicap spaces in that parking lower level under the building. So you'd be right there and there's a ramp and an elevator right close to those spaces.
Will there still be parking available on Tungstus Avenue?
That's a good question. We have had conversations with the town engineer about that. That Tungstus Avenue pull-off is signed with handicap designations on it. So in our mind, we were thinking of that as, since we were providing handicap spaces at the lower level, we were thinking about that, that pull-off as a good delivery spot, short-term parking. But it's, it's a, it's a good question. I mean, I think the town engineer understood our suggestion to keep it as a short-term delivery spot. But that's an open question, I think.
I, I think, Richard and Dave Sullivan can respond. That's going to be a discussion with the state as well because of the state road that it's right off of.
Sullivan, speaking of the state roads, whether it will ever come to pass, but it's still a subject of discussion. At some point in time, there might be a traffic rotary at the intersection of 189 and 178. Did that enter into any of your studies or design?
It, it has not entered into this particular evaluation. And the thinking is that we haven't changed the driveway locations. We have restrict, restricted the access a little more. So that whatever plans DOT may have for a roundabout there would not change.
Okay, so it'll be back in there later. Thank you very much. Any, any other questions from anyone?
We have a hand raised in the audience.
In the audience, okay. Mr. Flint, you, you first.
As long as we're talking about parking, I think one of the presenters had made a comment about employees of the library potentially having to park off-site if there wasn't enough capacity in the parking area that's planned. Can someone elaborate on where that would be?
Let me, let me start. This is Dave Sullivan. I was the one that brought that up. For the, the day-to-day activities and what they, their normal activities, there, there'll be enough parking on the site as there is today. If they have a large event, let's say there's a program with forty or fifty people that would be attending this, this particular program, the employees now park off-site to open up the parking for the guests, the patrons. So it's no different than what they're doing today. And with the increased parking, it kind of balances out with the increased programming that they have on the day-to-day basis. But those larger events, we'll have to keep doing the same thing they're doing today.
And the community room is able to accommodate how many people? About a hundred?
Yeah, now the community room is, is even larger than the large program. So that's, that's a third kind of scenario we looked at. The community room could, could function at maybe during the day when there's other activities going around. You probably couldn't have a full-capacity activity, community room plus programming, plus visitors, plus employees all on site. So when, when you, when they're scheduling the community room, they're going to have to be cautious. If it's during the day, what other programs are taking place, preferably none. You would want to do the daytime larger events without other ancillary programming. The full-capacity events probably make more sense in the evenings. For example, when there's not the visitors and there's not the employee demand and there's not the other programs. So there'll be some balancing as there is today. And there's, again, I think in terms of the day-to-day, it'll function pretty much as it does today with the parking. To accommodate these very large events, you would require too much parking on site. And it really wouldn't make sense for the small amount of usage.
Thank you. Just one more quick question. Will the hours of the library expand to include Sundays?
I can't answer that one. Maybe someone from the library could.
We can save that for another time.
Pre-COVID, they were open on Sundays.
We, we have some people with their hands raised that might be able to.
Actually, I think I can answer that. I think the library does plan on.
Please identify yourself in the room.
I'm sorry, Chair. Nancy Haynes, purchasing and risk manager here on behalf of the building committee. I do believe the library is considering Sunday hours prior to, to this project. So they have not voted on it yet, but they are planning to expand their service hours.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other questions? Anyone?
I have a question. How much, how many parking spaces are in the parking garage?
There are sixteen spaces in the parking garage, seventy-seven in the Riley parking.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Last call.
We have two people in the audience that want to.
Okay, would you promote them, please?
Sure, Bob Berman will be the first one and I, I don't need to unmute himself.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question about the roundabouts came up. The state has put that on an indefinite hold because they've discovered the traffic flow would not permit the roundabout's design. So that is sitting of compliance and there's no intention.
Mr. Berman, you're fading out.
I'm sorry. The, the roundabouts, state has put the roundabouts on permanent abeyance at this point in time because the traffic flow would not permit them to go forward as they were designed. They are not taking them off the table because it gets federal funding continuing on it. But there's no intention at this time for the foreseeable future to do anything about roundabouts in Town Bloomfield.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Anyone else?
There's a Rona Keel, I guess, and.
Rona Keel, yeah. Keel.
Rana Kyle.
Kyle, okay, thank you.
So you were wrong. On both counts. A lot of times I use the library just to drive up and put my book into the little, the little book drop-off. It would be really uncomfortable to have to park, walk across a pedestrian bridge to get to the building to drop off the book. I'm wondering if, if there's a consideration for that kind of use. Thank you.
Yes, there is a book drop-off planned. It's just off the driveway from Mountain Avenue. There, there will be a outdoor book drop. You can just pull up to it, drop your book in and be on your way.
Super, thank you.
And is there anyone else?
No other hands are up.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing at the December meeting.
So moved.
Motion.
Have a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. We'll see you all next month.
We'll see you in the next application.
Oh, that's right, too. I forgot about that. Well, is that appropriate since it has not been approved?
Well, the other one is not before Whatland's. I don't believe so. I don't think there's any Whatland's issues to it.
I understand that, but we haven't proved the. At this point in time, they can't put a shovel in the ground and start building a library.
No, the, the, the next one is the McMahon-Winnebury Library Edition. Total different application.
I'm sorry. I didn't even realize that. You're right. That's why that sign says libraries are coming. I never could figure out what they were talking about. Okay. This is just a site plan approval. And who's here to make their presentation on behalf of the applicant?
We're going to repeat the same order of the presentation as we did for Prosser. This application, this application is for the McMahon Library, which is located on Blue Hills Avenue. We're designing the libraries concurrently. The intention is to have the construction manager down to construction bid both projects concurrently. And there's a benefit to, there's a greater purchasing power by doing both projects simultaneously. And consequently, the building committee was, was assigned the responsibility of developing both Prosser and McMahon at the same time. We're going to go in the same order. I'm going to ask Mike Seegan from Richter and Seegan to talk about the site plan. Then we'll have some engineering comments from SLR and I'll wrap it up with some images of the building. So Mike, if you will.
Sure, thanks, Richard. Good evening, Mike Seegan again. The three-point-four-acre McMahon Library Site is located at 1015 Blue Hills Avenue. The site is within the Blue Hills Gateway District, which, a little different from Prosser, allowed for libraries subject to site plan approval. Libraries located at the intersection of Blue Hills and Rockwell Avenue. Two of the closest adjacent uses are the Blue Hills Fire District directly to the north and the AutoZone Commercial Facility directly to the south. The Bloomfield Early Learning Center is directly to the west. And there's a residential neighborhood across Blue Hills Avenue as well as along Wall Street to the south. And as you can see, there's significant wooded area and open space between the library and the learning center as well as the residential family, single-family homes along Wall Street. Next, please. This is a rendering of the survey, which illustrates the existing conditions for this library site. The existing library faces Blue Hills Avenue, front entry. The existing library faces Blue Hills Avenue, a front entry walk connects the Blue Hills Avenue sidewalk. There's also a bus stop in front of the library that we've incorporated into our um, design. There's also a rear or west entry to the library with a walk connecting to a thirty-two space parking lot. Currently, there's dumpsters that sit out in the open, on the pavement in the back corner of the lot. And there are two non-compliant handicap parking spaces. Both of these issues will be addressed when you see the new concept or site plan. The developed portion of the site is, is clearly in the easternmost part of the parcel at the corner of Blue Hills and, and Rockwell Avenues. The back part of the site is undeveloped with open lawn and quite a bit of existing woods. Next, please. Uh, this is the color rendering of the proposed site plan. The work here is, is uh, more modest than at Prosser, obviously. It's uh, an addition of approximately thirty-three hundred square feet. Is proposed for the front of the library. It's shown in the terracotta color uh, in the drawing here. Uh, Richard will follow to discuss the building uh, and architectural changes shortly. The back parking lot would be renovated and expanded with the parking count increased by six. Actually, the usable parking will be increased by eight because of the dumpsters now take up two spaces in the parking lot. Um, and the expansion has incorporated the, the dumpster, uh. Actually, in an, in enclosure with gates for screening. The handicapped spaces will be brought up uh, to current standards um, in the redesign as well. There's a, a children's garden located off the back of the library, adjacent to the children's room inside the building. This outdoor space will be screened uh, from the parking lot. A sitting area with a seat wall and benches will be located in front of the library for outdoor use and those waiting for the bus. The landscaping will be sign- significantly upgraded with the removal of planting some pork condition. And the addition of shade trees in the parking lot and at the front entry. As well as landscaping of outdoor spaces around the uh, building, including in the children's garden. Uh, that concludes again a very quick overview of the site plan and I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Daly.
Sure, for uh, once again, for the record, Tom Daly with SLR. Um, and as Mike's indicated, uh, this site is much more modest. Uh, the property is served by Public Water and Sewer, which are located out to Bloom Hills Ave. Uh, those, the, that will continue to be the case uh, with this uh, this uh, expansion. In terms of stormwater, once again, we have a site that has no stormwater management on it. Uh, no water quality features, so we're gonna kind of look at it to refresh that. Uh, we do have on it, so there is a um, slight increase in impervious coverage. You can see in the light green located at, to the uh, left of the parking lot is a stormwater management basin. Um, that basin is designed for both quality and quantity. Um, so we're showing no increase in runoff. For the two through the hundred-year storm. Uh, that basin ultimately overflows into the Rockwell Avenue uh, drainage system. So uh, this site does not have wetlands or floodplains, so there's not a uh, uh, those features to drain into. Uh, but that being said, is we are working closely with Mike's office and uh, the town engineer. Uh, when we come back to see you next uh, month, you may see a slightly different um, approach towards drainage. The conclusions will be the same. But we may be uh, kind of reshaping that to uh, potentially um, allow some more open lawn area. But uh, once again, uh, we have received the town engineer's comments. We're working closely with him. And uh, and we have a meeting with him tomorrow to, to resolve that. But, and we're com- we're confident that when we do come back to you next month, we will have those resolved. Thank you. Uh, with that, I think uh, Dave Sullivan will provide uh, a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dave Sullivan, uh, uh, SLR Traffic Transportation Manager. Um, we uh, for this site, for this expansion, we did not do a traffic study, but we did do. A parking evaluation. Um, our scope is very similar to what we did at Prosser where we. Um, estimated what the existing demands would be by uh, visitors, employees and programs. We vetted that with the library staff to calibrate our model. Uh, then we took the future. Uh, projections of the demographics under those three categories and expanded it. Um, our findings were, were very similar with the new parking we feel is right-sized for day-to-day activities. Um, and for the larger or peak events, which of course the peak events here are. Less frequent and significantly smaller than they are at Prosser. Um, but uh, for those uh, peak events. Um, we feel there will be some parking management required. But again, uh, the important thing is for day-to-day activities and normal programming. Uh, the parking lot is appropriately sized in our opinion. Uh, so that, that's uh, that's all, all I have. And I'll turn it back to Richard.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, again, this is a good place to start with the site plan. Just to get you oriented, when I show you the floor plans, we have one door directly off of the parking lot. That's on the western side. Of the building. And then we have another door on the eastern side of the building, which is where the addition is. Facing Blue Hills Avenue. Um, and then we have the children's play area. I think that's important in. My explanation of the interior. This is a one-story building and it will continue to be a one-story building. And we need to blend the new area with the existing footprint, which will be completely renovated and reconfigured. Next. So again, orienting you to the floor plan, we have the uh, western entrance. Directly off the parking lot and on the opposite side, on the eastern side, the entrance from the Blue Hills Avenue elevation. Um, you see the circular item sort of uh, halfway between those entrances right there. That's the circulation desk. So it's a very prominent location. Uh, and people from the desk can see people coming and going. At either entrance. If you were to come in off of the Blue Hills Avenue entrance, you go through a vestibule. Uh, but to the right, as you come in, there's an entrance into uh, a breakout area with some. Uh, tables and chairs, uh, that's also leading into the uh, multipurpose room, the yellow area there. Uh, that whole area can be closed off. You can lock off all of the library and have the after-hours events. Directly off of that vestibule. Uh, and you don't have access to other parts of the library. That blue area. Is a bathroom area that would be available to the after-hours users. Uh, three small meeting rooms are available for after-hours users. And though that whole area can be isolated from the rest of the library, should you have that kind of event. Coming in from the same vestibule, if you look to the left as you come in, you'll see the adult area. Uh, and right there, and then you'll see the children's area beyond that in pink. There, and you'll see a door that leads directly outside to the children's garden. Children's reading area, as you can see. The green area at the top of the plan. Is the teen room, teen activity room. It's separated by a glass wall for acoustic reasons. And the orange area to the left is a staff work areas. Next slide, please. So this is the adult area. As you come in, the vestibule from Blue Hills Avenue, immediately to the left, you'll see this. Adult collection and work area. Next. Uh, this is the multipurpose room that's available after hours. Next. Uh, this is the children's area in the back of the building, and you can see at the western elevation. Glass wall that leads out to the children's garden. Next. Uh, this is the front facade. Uh, the look of the building will be completely transformed. Right now, the building has very dark glass. It has very dark brick. Uh, but this addition gives us the opportunity to update that look completely. It's a composition of glass, aluminum frame, window wall. Uh, and then to the right, you can see exterior wood siding. It's actually a manufactured product. It's a wood veneer. It's uh, it lasts for a very long time. Uh, this is something that we discussed with the building committee and there was a decision made by the building committee last night. We showed them a couple of options. One is brick and the other is this wood material. And they chose to proceed with this wood. And then you can also see on this front facade, um, the roof tilt. That roof opening up higher, uh, that allows more light into this entrance. But also gives a very contemporary look. It freshens the entire look of the building. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a view uh, from the southeast corner of the building. You can see how the curtain wall, the window wall opens up high. That allows light in, but it's controlled light because we are specifying glass that has a friended coating on it. That will allow us to cr- control the light that's coming into the space internally. Next. Well, maybe that's the last one. Yes, this is the last slide. So uh, that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to. Answer any questions or hear your comments.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Um, was aluminum composite panels ever brought up for the exterior envelope of the front of the building besides the wood? Seeing that it would have a longer life to it?
We didn't consider uh, aluminum panels or any kind of metal panel. Quite frankly, we like the warmth of the wood. We did present that. We showed photographs of the other projects that have been done. Uh, using that material. It does last a long time, but we like the fact that it has a natural warm feeling about it. And, and I think this building needs that um, this environment.
Okay, I was just curious because they do have, I know it's more of a statement, but they do have composite panels that do look like wood also.
You're right. You're right, they do.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, any questions?
Uh, none at this time, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Bloods? Ms. Blood?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, Ms. Adams?
Not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Hussein?
All set at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Uh, no questions at this, at this time.
Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, no, we're not turning this over to the audience. This is, this is not a public hearing. Um, Jose, any comments? Jose?
You're muted, Jose.
You're muted.
Sorry, I thought I clicked it. I guess I did. Um, and you, you do have my memo, um. And it outlines some of the, and I believe you do have the, the town engineer's memo with some concerns uh, which are being addressed between. Uh, the town engineer and the applicant. Uh, again, uh, s- uh, my recommendation at this point is to table. Uh, this matter till the, the next meeting and, and, and have them, hopefully, uh, by the time we come back, we'll have those issues. Resolved so that there's some minor conditions.
When they come back, what is the schedule for that?
Uh, well, to the next meeting, which is December fifteenth.
So we hit, we'll have to postpone a decision on this.
Right. That, that would be my recommendation.
Right.
December fifteenth.
Right.
Yeah, December fifteenth.
Entertain a motion to continue this on December fifteenth.
So moved.
Have a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, chair votes aye. See you again in December.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, new business. Jose, you have our twenty-twenty-three meeting schedule.
Yeah, I set that up basically the same schedule as this year. Uh, the, the fourth Thursday, except for November and December. Um, which I believe uh, all fall. Although I think there was a question on whether or not. We could, we can meet in the, because the way it fell, um, let me uh. Let me get my schedule up on my screen, um. Yeah, the twenty-first is the third, twos would be the third, um. We're just kind of close, uh, but. And I don't know if you wanted to meet on a regular fourth one, which would be the twenty-eighth, which is between Christmas and New Year's. What would be your preference?
I think at that point, it doesn't matter. We'll all be on an argue schedule at that point. Unless I'm mistaken, if other people have other feelings.
Well, the twenty-first is before, before the Christmas holiday and the twenty-eighth, which be your nor- your normal meeting night would be between. Uh, the Christmas and New Year's holidays. That week usually tends to be, people take off or, or busy or. But if, if, I, I mean, if it's, if you just want to go with what I propose, that's fine. That's a. That's in keeping what we've done every year.
Right. Anyone have any comment?
Just that the week between Christmas and New Year's is a big vacation week in the corporate world.
Oh, really?
That's why I thought about it and I said that. I'll just keep it at, at the third, two, Thursday.
No, I don't see, I, I don't see any problem with the way it is. Anyone else has any suggestions?
Not just give me a motion to approve it and I'll send it along to the town clerk.
Entertain a motion for approval. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion further? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, chair votes aye. Now comes the good part. Oh, Jose, why don't you lead off where we are with this?
Yeah, well, yeah, in uh, the legislature, uh, about a year or so ago, in, in Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Uh, adopted number, number of changes to the, to the statutes, some of which are, are. Uh, the, the major one, which, which is, we're under a somewhat of a very tight deadline is, is. That if, unless the town voluntarily, um, uh, uh, you know, opts out. Uh, as of January first of, of the, of twenty-twenty-three, we need, we will have to treat any, uh. Allow accessory dwelling units in, in anywhere where we allow single-family homes. Uh, right now, we act, do it as a special permit and it's very limited to family members. And we put all sorts of con- of. Conditions with which it, which make it difficult to sustain, which is uh, that they have to be removed. Um, if, if, if the family member uh, no longer lives there or when you sell the unit, uh. And it's not used as such. So the question, a lot, sometimes have opted out, some of the towns have not, and uh, and I know there's, there's. Strong feelings as part of the, the, the whole push to have more affordable housing, provide more opportunities in, in municipalities to. To have affordable uh, type of housing or, or. But the one thing about the, you know, if you do add a, a, accessory dwelling units under the statute that you don't. They don't count towards your base uh, for the um, Affordable Housing Act eight dash thirty, so. It, it, you, you don't penalize towns for allowing these, um. You know, you don't, you don't increase the, the, the number of, uh. Of dwelling units in town for the, those type of calculations. So. The question is if the commission wants to proceed and opt out or just have the legisla- just have those regulations take place. Um, if you do want to opt out, we would have to hold a hearing, which means it's probably a special meeting in, in, in December. Before the council, the two things have to happen. The commission has to vote to opt out. And then the town council has to uh, uh, ratify that vote. Um, also vote to. Opt out if, if, if the commission so chooses. So uh, uh, because of that, the, the. I'm, I'm, I'm sure, sure the council's not going to meet the second meeting in December, um, because it would, I think it would be Christmas Eve, uh, but. Um. We would have to have a public hearing before their, um, before their, uh, meeting. Uh, other things in the, in the statute that, that, that are. The, that, that come into play and, and we cannot tout out of that is, is that. Commission members will now have to have at least biannally, bi- an- annually, uh, uh, four, four hours of, of land use education. Um, so uh, th- those, those. those type of uh activities that are offered by UConn or I think uh through uh the the bar association. I think the state was supposed to come up with some guidelines for that, but you you US commissioners would be required to do four hours every uh every so every two years uh to uh to 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 be able to serve under commission. And uh again, uh the other things that that are more of a staff issue is that zoning enforcement officers beginning in January one twenty twenty-three requires that all appointed zoning officers obtain and maintain certification from the from Casio. So it's 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 it requires a a certain uh licensing, I I guess, or or degree of of licensing uh uh from from uh from Casio after after January first uh. And again, there's there's the requirement that you produce an affordable housing plan, which we're working on. It was uh the deadline was June first twenty twenty-two. We've gotten extensions because we were in transition. And that we do have uh Goman New York, uh Don Poland, working on the plan which hopefully we'll be able to update John at the next meeting. Uh he's pretty well along on it. So uh we do we have anybody here that has any uh any any I don't know if you had a chance to look at the act and 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 look at the summary that I provided you?
What happens if we do nothing tonight?
If you do nothing, you don't hold a hearing, January first comes around, we we change our regulations to match what the state basically says, which is you got you're gonna have to start treating somebody comes in for an accessory dwelling unit on a single-family lot, you'll have to approve. Well, we we'd have to approve it. And and uh otherwise, I mean, that the the way our regulations are written, I I I would suggest you need changes anyway, because they 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 make it very difficult. Uh we we do allow two families as of right in our ten and 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 our 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 five zones or our fifteen. So uh that's that's, you know, a lot than most people uh and most towns in Connecticut allow. So I think in many cases, when people come in and ask for accessory dwelling units, I say, I I tell them, you're better off coming in and building a two family, putting in a two-family, a full second unit. That way you don't have to go to the planning zoning commission, you don't have to go through any special permit procedures, just uh apply for zoning permits. So we do have those provisions for in the R fifteen and R ten zones, so I don't think anything really will change uh. All other zones that allow single-family residents would be allowed to have one accessory dwelling unit.
And when do we have to get this in front of the uh council by?
Well, uh before their before their first meeting in in uh in December uh so uh let me see what
So that gives us next week.
No, I think they 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 I think
We'd have to have a special meeting on probably the twelfth or the fifth.
They will meet on the nineteen on the, yeah, that they would meet on the twelfth, so we'd we would have to do a legal notice, hold a hearing so the week before that, the first week of uh
Twelfth is a Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah. They they meet on the twelfth, so you would have to have a public hearing sometime.
So do we.
You would have to. They don't have to have a public hearing. They just have to vote on it. So if you were to hold a public hearing and and vote to opt out on on uh on the week of uh December fifth, uh you would be able to then communicate that to the council, put it on their agenda, and they could and then they would have the final say whether to ratify that or not ratify that.
Well, unless anyone has any objections, I guess, let's schedule a meeting for the fifth. You don't have to vote on it.
Well, yeah, what what I mean what days are good for everyone uh uh?
Well, the fifth is a Thursday, right?
No, December would be, the fifth is a Monday, December sixth uh is a Tuesday. Thursday would be the eighth um but uh and Wednesday would be the seventh. I mean, if 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 you I I don't if if you want to do it how about the sixth? Would would Tuesday the sixth be acceptable?
That's fine with me. Anyone else?
I'm good that week.
Yeah, I can do the six.
That way you can have a hearing, people can show up and say whether or not debate, get a chance to read through everything and then made the site tapped out uh.
Let's get it set up.
Okay.
Very good. I would object. I don't think I need four weeks of school. All right, let's have it. Well, before we get to the updating, uh you were going to uh formally introduce uh Dennis to us. Why don't we?
Yeah, uh
Go through that and
Dennis uh Yeah, we were very lucky to get a get a a very high-quality applicant and 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 uh and 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 get him to agree to come, which was great. Um not only that, we 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 have an assistant uh director position coming in a week after uh on the twenty eighth, so you'll 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 actually and and we had a a a new administrative assistant uh also second, so uh you know, so we have the we finally, I think, have the staff resources to to be able to 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 meet the obligations of all the different commissions that 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 I currently have. So Dennis comes to us uh with some very high skills. Uh he's a land registered landscape architect and also certified urban designer, so uh uh that that I think those are are excellent kind of skills that we we certainly need it right now at uh in the town and with all the developments going on and with the library, with the center apartments, uh those to come uh. Uh Dennis has worked for the city of Hartford. Uh well, I'll let him explain, uh give him his his resume on there, but I I we're very happy to have him and uh and I know he'll do really well.
Thank you, Jose, and uh you 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 I'll I'll keep it very brief considering uh the time of the evening and uh uh I think you covered um my credentials as being a landscape architect, um my degrees in landscape architecture, um um AICP as um as is Jose and um advanced credential of certified ur- urban design. Um I've worked for not only the city of Hartford, but city of Bryan and the town of Waterford. And um I've also served in the private sector as well as a consultant, so I kind of I've worn both hats, if you will, um and I've met a lot of people out there in 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 the field and um uh believe I have a good sense of of things and but still also know that there's a lot that needs to be learned and uh and to stay on top of. So um um I looking forward to starting and getting on boarded on Monday next week and um I wish everybody a Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, one one of the things he didn't mention, Dennis, was that you did work on our zoning regulations with Planometrics. Right?
Oh, really?
Does have some familiarity with 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 the town of Bloomfield and and and
You can fix all the mistakes now.
Yeah. We messed up since they 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 were adopted.
Yeah, no, that was when Tom Hooper, I think, was there and uh and that's not to mean anything against Tom demeaning against Tom Hooper, but uh I I I had a little bit to do with it and I had did some visionary stuff for Winterbury Mall and um um I also worked with Mike Seagan, who was on the call earlier. That was my first job out of college and worked on um a couple of projects a little bit in Bloomfield and definitely throughout the area um with with them. Um so um I'll just leave it at that for now, so.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard and best of luck.
Definitely welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you. So what does that mean, Jose?
Doesn't mean
Means Jose is going to go on.
I already made plans to go to Spain in March and the and Florida and January and and uh lots of other different things.
But are you staying for a bit of a transition period?
Yeah, whatever Dennis needs for, you know, like I said, I I I'll be happy.
Then let's move ahead to the plan of conservation.
So that's one of the things uh I was gonna, I hadn't even met with the with the the people, the FHI uh studio yet and uh they so they they started suggesting a meeting. I said, well, we got two new people coming on board. I think you really should meet with uh with with Dennis and Justin La Fountain, which is going to be the assistant uh director. So uh we got something set up for that week of the fifth, I believe. We're we're gonna try to get together and uh and sort of uh lay out a a schedule for things that to happen uh so we can get moving on it. Whereas, you know, we're 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 behind in 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 our updating and then good with all the transition going on, really haven't been able to make any headway. So um hopefully by the next meeting we have a a schedule and and a better idea of how you're going to be proceeding.
So everybody knows on the commission too, as I I I have a relationship with FHI, worked with them at different levels of of things and I've already spoken with them and uh uh we're, as Jose had just suggested, we're coordinating a meeting the week after the Thanksgiving holiday. Goman New York will be part of that meeting and uh we're we're just trying to figure out the the date and time, so uh get that started.
Sounds good to me. So we're still sort of we're still crawling. We haven't gotten up to take the first baby steps yet. You know, we'll get there. All right, moving on. Eight twenty-four referrals for the, this is for the staff in Winterbury Mall?
Yeah, this is a good library. Nancy Hayes is here, Haynes is here, so uh she's gonna uh I guess the council is is has approved um or explored the possibility of of leasing, you know, when the li- when the library gets built, they're gonna there's gonna be a twenty-two-month period where they're gonna need some temporary space to conduct activities near the center. And I think uh they're they're proposing to sign a lease with the owner of the Winterbury Mall for space in the mall uh during the construction. Nancy, can you? Anything else you want to?
Um Nancy Hain, purchasing and risk manager for the sit town of Bloomfield, and I am here on behalf of the building committee. Um and Dennis, I'd like to welcome you aboard as another former Hartford alumni. Um city of Hartford alumni. There's a several of us in the town, so we look forward to bringing another one on.
Make sure it includes me.
That is true, Chair. I I forgot about that. You were there probably long before all of us, so.
Absolutely.
Uh but like I said, I am here on behalf of the um library building committee. And their November second meeting, they voted to recommend to the town council that the town enter into an agreement with the owners of Wittenberry Mall for the use of um excuse me, um space at the mall for swing space during construction. Um construction is uh expected to take twenty-two months, um ten months for for Wittenberry and longer for obviously eighteen to twenty-two months for Prosser. Um so the library does need space to operate out of during that time period when both um libraries will be under construction because there are economies of scale doing them concurrently. Um so there was an extensive, almost a years-long search for um space for the library to operate out of. Um pickings for those kind of um spaces in the town are very slim, although the town does have some available space. Most of it is office space that would require extensive renovations. Um so this thirty-two hundred square feet at um Wittenberry Mall seemed to be the best option. If you are looking at Wittenberry Mall from the Park Avenue side um and you see State Farm Insurance, it's the suite immediately to the right of that. Um it's got some good glass um window front and some uh shelving that also faces the door. The monthly rent, I think, is uh two thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and the common area rent is um a thousand sixty-six dollars. Um the rent does not include utilities, nor does it include maintenance. The uh project will pay for all of that. Um and the town attorney had recommended that the council refer this to TPZ for an eight twenty-four hearing. And um with your favorable recommendation back to the council, the town attorney um would then recommend that, subject to final changes in the lease, that the town manager be authorized to execute the lease for a twenty-two-month period beginning January first, even though construction is not expected to start until late March, early April. Um there are some, a few modifications that have to be made to the space, a few more outlets, some data drops. Um I think a handicap sink is required. Um so the hope is to be able to sign the lease effective January first to allow the month of January to make those changes. And then the library staff can move in in February. Um the use uh the mall is zoned for this type of use. Obviously, the library is directly across the street for it, so it um it comports with current zoning regulations. So the library building committee would be um very pleased if you would favorably recommend it back to the town council.
Any questions from anyone on the commission? Yeah, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for an eight twenty-four approval. I'm sorry, Kevin, you had a now he's off the air. You you muted yourself. You're still muted.
I'll check to the
Kevin, you're breaking up and you're muted.
All right, sorry.
Try again, Kevin. You're still muted.
Breaking up.
I think we've lost Mr. Hussein. Mr. Hussein, are you still there?
I'm sorry. Uh you can move on. It's okay. Thanks.
Okay, entertain a motion for an eight twenty-four approval.
Just that I think this should just be in the form of a recom- re- recommendation that the
Okay, recommendation for the uh
The council uh signed the lease.
Yes.
Just a recommendation.
That's true. You have a motion to that effect?
A moment.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Uh just a quick question. This is just for the staff, correct? The library staff?
No, we'll be open to the public.
That's just for the public to be able
Oh, it's a full facility, so thirty-two hundred square feet?
The small facility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're basically picking up and dropping off books.
Yeah.
Well, you know, they do do, they currently do a lot of programming virtually. Um they have a very, very big uh virtual presence. Um they often refer to their virtual site as their third site, so um because they've already got that um in place, that kind of supplements the space that they would need. And as I said, it's just you know, large, open space in Bloomfield is just not something that's a an easy commodity.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion before us. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extinctions, chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, updates, Jose?
Much. Again, uh I think I already updated you on the staffing situation.
Right, yeah.
So that's great. Um and well, like I said, I'll I'll be around as much as Dennis needs me. Um I'm not gonna park myself in the office uh like I did last time, but uh
We'll get you a rocking chair.
Be on call and I'll probably be able to work from home if I need to.
Little rocking chair and a shawl. Give me the shawl from the cold.
Actually, more comfortable than, you know, doing these meetings from from work than it is from home, although I I did buy the bullet by a a a new chair, so uh when when this all
I I would just like to remind uh Dennis he made a comment about it being late in the hour. Hang on, we've had midnight meetings, so.
But but don't don't scare him away, Barry. I mean, normally, we're we're pretty sure.
Nah, we gotta steal him for it.
Mr. Chairman, I've had meetings that have gone to one to two o'clock in the morning, so it's
Oh, yeah, we've all had them, but but he, oh, I see. Now, we had to get out of the building because the burglar alarm went on. There's something
Well, Zoom, Zoom is
I think one time it did go off.
Has become a great, great tool for a lot of things, so.
Security was on a timer and 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 uh all of a sudden, this cop showed up.
All right, entertain a motion for German.
So moved.
So moved. Don't move.
The second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor may go home. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Oh, same to you.
Welcome, Dennis.
Thank you.